It's six o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we come before you this evening as we transition between the warm summer and the nice enjoyable air that we always enjoy this time of year to the fall and the leaves falling, the weather turning cooler. And Lord, it's also political season and so if there's any time when we as a community, as people, as a city, as fire and police and city council and citizens need extra prayer, it's during political season. Lord, we pray that you would be with this city and this council as they do your work today. Look after them, give them guidance and wisdom and strength. Be with the police and fire as they meet the needs of the citizens and oftentimes keep them safe in harm's way. And then, Lord, we just pray for this community that it would be all that it could possibly be, that you would just meet each need of each citizen. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Michael, if you'll take the roll, please.
All right. Excuse me. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius has asked to be excused. Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of September 27th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Begin this evening with a proclamation for the Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, which is October 13th. This is something where we as a city, I believe for the last three years, along with Michelin, who owns the Uniroil Tire, have been participating. I will read the proclamation. This evening we have four individuals here who are associated with the organization. And they, one of them brought this to my attention three years ago. If you would just please stand before I read this to be recognized. I think I met some of these ladies last year out in front of the building where they were doing a tour of the areas in the metro Detroit area and taking a lot of pictures and they are, pardon my language, one hell of a group. So with this proclamation, Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, October 13th, 2022. Whereas October is recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, breast cancer being the most common type of cancer among women in the world and the second leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States, with more than one in eight women and one in 833 men in the U.S. diagnosed with breast cancer during their lives. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, liver, and brain, and regardless of early detection, approximately 30% of stage zero to three breast cancers will return as stage four. And whereas there is currently no cure for metastatic breast cancer and the regimen to extend the best quality of life possible frequently involves trying one treatment after another, and whereas in an effort to combat this disease, the national organization Metaviver Research and Support funds critical stage four metastatic breast cancer research and education, and whereas in order to raise awareness, have designated the tricolors of teal, pink, and green, the teal for healing and spirituality, green for the triumph of spring over winter and life over death, and pink signifying the cancer originated in the breast. And whereas the city of Allen Park joins in the Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day efforts this October to shine a light on the need for awareness and funding in our community and throughout the country, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Gail McLeod, on behalf of the city of Allen Park and all of its elected officials, do hereby designate October 13, 2022, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day and that City Hall and our police department will be lit in their colors on that night. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan be affixed this 11th day of October 2022. And I will email a copy of this to you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting it.[352.62][352.62](applause) And now I have an appointment near and dear to my heart. I will call for a motion to appoint to the Beautification Commission student commissioners Giselle Ford of Allen Park High School and Joshua Hancock of Cabrini High School. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Lally. Comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If the two students would please come forward. Mr. Mizzi is going to swear you in.
First of all, thank you, you guys. It is a great honor to swear in students, okay? This started many years ago and we haven't had a lot of them. And ironically, the guy who wrote the first ordinance is back there in the scout uniform. So, but we haven't had none yet and you guys are doing a great thing. Thank you. I'm going to swear you in, make it official, and at the end, all you have to do is say, "I swear," I affirm, or "I swear," I affirm, or "I do," whichever you feel most comfortable with. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Michigan and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of beautification student commissioners to the best of your ability, so help you God?
I do.
All right, congratulations.[474.12][474.12](applause)
And we don't want to hold anyone over who doesn't want to stay for the meeting, but I think frequently our council members want to make a comment, so if anyone would like to make a comment, I'll start with Mr. Lloyd to my left.
So, thank you guys both so much for doing this. Mr. Hancock, very much appreciate it. This is a very important thing to have, that student representation. To Giselle, I've known Giselle since she was a sophomore in my APUS history class, and so it is a particularly proud moment for me to have one of my former students stepping up and taking that responsibility, so very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being part of the Beautification Committee. City of Allen Park really thanks you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for joining the commission. I think it's a great honor and a definitely really big step in public service. I hope you make it a tradition and hopefully you learn something. You're welcome to stay this meeting if you wish. If not, go on your merry way, but thank you definitely for standing up. Thank you.
Mr. Blevins.
Thank you for joining, students. And if you enjoy it all these years, you can, once you're 18, you can become a commissioner as a resident. And then again, to any student that wants to help this city out, like again, any community service, it means a big deal to help our city out as much as you can, but thank you to you both.
Giselle and Joshua, thanks. I hope you guys use this as a good learning experience for your future. Everything you can learn about politics to move up and help your education, and this is a great thing for the city and we really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to the city administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This young man in the front row, like five pages I had last time.[639.12][639.12](laughter) Ten pages tonight for you. I got you covered tonight. Real couple of quick updates on what we've got going on here. Stream improvement program, Hard Rock Concrete is preparing to pour the concrete on the south side of Philomen Boulevard from Park Avenue to Cobal Avenue. There's subcontractors start the restoration on Rosedale Boulevard from Moore Road to Wick Road. And the Park Avenue restoration from Champagne Road to Angelique Avenue is now complete. For concrete sectioning program, if you try to come in off of Roosevelt to City Hall through the alleyway, you will stop because Savon Smith is still working on the reconstruction of White Avenue near the community center. For the water replacement program, Savon Smith is working on the sidewalk replacement on the Winona Avenue from Champagne Road to Ecorse Road. And then we've had some issue with the restoration company, so we've actually contracted with PSC. They're the DTE contractor. They'll be working on the restoration for that area of Winona as well over the next few weeks. We were told for Arnold Avenue paving that Ailes Ashfall will be here on Thursday to pave Arnold Avenue from Beatrice Avenue to Warwick Avenue. This has been down for a number of months while we get it prepped and ready for paving and getting Ailes back in here. Once they're in town, we believe we'll have a date for them to do the three alleyways that the DDA has contracted them to do, so we'll get those paved as well before the, before fall, colder weather approaches even more. For the DDA, they have a number of activities here for our month of October. Scarecrow Festival is Friday, October 14th. The farmer's market continues through October 28th. That is on the Friday, so we'll be here the 14th, the 21st, 28th. Trunk or Treat is also going to be on Friday, October 28th, and those are all down on the Park Avenue area. And then December, they'll be hosting the indoor market on December 2nd at the community center. Allen Park Public Library's 21st Annual Haunted Library, that will take place on Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:30 to 12:00 noon. I believe that's going to be in the parking lot, it's an outdoor event, not in the parking lot, outside of the, outside of the library, but it is an outdoor event this year. And then finally, the shred day will be Saturday, October 22nd. The event will be held from the community center from 9:00 to 1:00. And I see Mr. Smith here. I think Mr. Smith last time for barbecue at the recreation. I want to thank you because you're here in person tonight. I don't know if he went home and told you that or not, so we do appreciate it. So, that is everything I have.
May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Blevins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We are now at the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Residents may come up and have four minutes to speak. All we want is your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your full address.
Terry Chaney, I live on Perris Street, sort of along the lines of the Allen Park Beautification. Reason I came tonight was to draw the council's attention, perhaps you would have some ideas on a way to handle this. Brant Park is across the street from our house, and all throughout the summer, the kids play there, there's baseball games there, and there's a basketball court there, of course. We seem to get a lot of outside activity on the basketball court, and it's not the younger kids, it's adults coming in and parking at the end of College Street, and they simply trash the park. They, they don't pick up anything. The bags of potato chips, et cetera, that they empty, blow into the fence lines of the residents' houses. They leave Gatorade bottles and water bottles and you name it scattered all about, and then the winds we've had this summer seem to really have blown around the park. When the lawn service comes in and cuts it, they cut the bottles up and you got a bigger mess. And I was hopeful that council might have an idea as to somehow defer this or do something with it, because there's a lot of the residents that live in the area, myself included, that use the park. I actually walk my dog through it almost on a daily basis, and I pick up bottles and I throw them into the trash, et cetera. But quite frankly, it's become quite a project. I went over there two nights ago after the park was clean, and it was an absolute disgusting mess. Again, I don't know if there's any actions that can be done, something, but this just can't continue. It's, it's just trash in the neighborhood. That's, I don't think that's what we want our city to look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, it's my pleasure to come before you this evening. My name's Richard Gaddigan, and I am a member of the Allen Park Vietnam Memorial and Beyond Committee. I wanted to let you know that we had a, our first public fundraiser last Thursday, and I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge those that made this fundraiser The Elks Club on Philomen and Park, its exalted ruler, Mike, and I'm just going to give you the first names, if you don't mind. His volunteers, Joe, Glenn, Sandy, Mary Ann, and Mike, were very helpful in preparing the food, serving the food, and cleaning up as well. There were Mickey and Mike Goodpastor, who is from Downriver Vietnam Veterans Post, who greeted our guests at the door and with both hands accepted any donations. I don't think I've excluded anyone, or maybe just one person. And this individual was ultimately very responsible for our dinner, because we would not have had it without him, and that was Tony Lally, who made us, from my first experience, his famous chicken cacciatore. Thank you, Tony. Our expectations were exceeded. We started out with 40 pounds of chicken, expecting perhaps a half a pound per person, and it wasn't too long after the meal started that we had to send someone out to get, get some more chicken. Unfortunately, everyone was well taken care of in that regard. Exceeding our expectations, we, I don't have a final number of donations received, but we had more than 100 guests at $15 a plate, and donations received at the door as well. I think that report is coming soon to our committee. Is that right, Tony? Because this is my first appearance before the council and mayor, I hope that in the coming months, I'll have another opportunity to, to let you know on the progress from my end of things anyways. I know we have Robert Fulton, Director of Parks and Rec, that might be filling you in as well, but I hope that I'll have some opportunities to fill you in as, as time goes I'd like to approach, if I may. I have a list of our Allen Park KIA's. They number 15 from the Vietnam War. I'd like to give each one a use, a copy of that.
If you would please give it to the clerk and he will make sure that the rest of us get it.
I like this list of names, I'd like to ask you to make one correction. If you would look at the, I believe he was a captain in the Air Force. He was not killed in South Vietnam, but in Laos. So if you'd make that correction, it'd be appreciated.
We will check on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mark Bailey, Philomen Boulevard. First of all, I want to thank the current city council and the city departments, the thousands of residents and the participants, the special needs individuals who are ready to enjoy a really big shoe, I mean show, at the Elks. This is what we do. We helped out on one event. Here we go at the end of this month, having our 34th annual pumpkin patch. Some of you here have helped me out 34 years. Some have helped me one, and everything's going. I want to thank all of those. I want to thank the students for the floats. I want to thank the students in advance for coming down and helping out with an activity for the special needs and for the children outside. That includes Allen Park High School, Melvindale High School, Cabrini High School. I want to thank the pumpkin pickers who went out this past Sunday, and we have a little display started on Park Avenue. It's lit up at night also. Then I'll update you on the activities planned. The DDA with their scarecrow festival and the farmer's market in conjunction with the trunk or treat is Friday night, the 28th. And at 7:00, we'll be having entertainment on Park Avenue from 7:00 till 10:00. That's Friday night. Saturday, there's a pet parade in conjunction with Wade and the role models and Park Avenue again, right there. So Friday night, Saturday, the pet parade, then you have MSU and U of M going at it that day. Might be entertainment that evening, we're still working on that. Sunday, you have the Lions in Miami. If it gets so bad, there might be entertainment outside. But if it's good, it'll be inside. And Monday is our show that we've been doing for 34 years. The special needs people will be arriving at 6:00. Everybody else will be arriving at 5:00. I want to thank you in advance for letting me chair this event for the Elks for 34 years. Originally, it was supposed to be 20 years, and it just keeps going, and thank you very much. And thank you in advance for all you've helped me with. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. No further individuals are coming forward. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, finance actions, and a license and permit, parade permit for the Lighted Christmas Parade, which will be held on Friday, November 18th. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally. Supported by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolutions. First resolution is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefit to rebid the water main replacement contract and approve the offer from Brico Excavating Company to extend their contract through the 2023 construction season. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mark Blevins.
Support it.
Supported by Mr. Marcos.
Mark Blevins.[1585.33][1585.33](laughter)
Well, I, Mr., I heard one voice and I saw a head move that was different, but anyway. Any comments or questions? Clarification from our administrator.
We've used Brico here for the last, definitely this past year's project, but we've used them in the past with no, no major issues. Very happy to be able to present this again to the council for consideration, as I think it will be a cost savings in the long, long run, not only for the advertisement that we wanted to expand those costs out, but just the, being able to utilize the costs similar to what we've done in the past with other contractors for labor. I believe the materials still could be a question on that, which is common for almost anything going on right now in the United States. I wish Mr. Chaney hadn't left so soon, because he would have found out that his area that he lives at is going to be a water main. With that area from Park, Perris, from Allen Road to Lawrence, would be the project area.
Any council members have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Second resolution is to concur with the recommendation of the Festivities Commission and approve the expenditure for a single-sided City of Allen Park sign at Outer Drive, east of Southfield, M39, and a double-sided City of Allen Park sign at Republic Drive, south of Rotunda Drive, for a cost not to exceed $10,000. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Marcos. Comments or questions?
So this is a replacement of the wooden signs that were put back in early 2000, I believe early 2000s, early 1999s. Definitely in need. These are more of a composite structure as opposed to the wooden structure that's out there now, a little bit cheaper than the wood, and I believe the longevity will be a little bit better. These locations are desperate need. Outer Drive is in desperate, desperate need. Festivus has already approved to replace the one at Pelham Road, at Allen Road, dotted area, and then we had a, the one at Pine Crest here at Southfield Road was replaced when a truck decided it crashed through, a truck driver. We'll, that'll just leave us with a couple locations left, and we'll work with the DDA to see if they can get those replaced here in Southfield. I did get the invoice for the gentleman, I believe we're probably going to be looking around, actually less than $9,000. So hopefully council will concur with this, and we do want to appreciate the appreciation of Festivus Commission for putting this on their behalf.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we move on to other business. This evening we have the third reading and the public hearing for proposed ordinance number 52022. May I have a motion to approve the third reading and public hearing?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. Any questions? Hearing none, I will ask the attorney to Hearing none, I will ask the attorney to move the third reading.
Good evening. Ordinance 05-2022, in ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 42, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1 in general, by the addition of Section 42-8, immunity for damages to right-of-way improvements.
And now the public hearing.
I asked for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Did I ask? I missed that, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Got the carrot before the horse, sorry. It's counting on you, Charles. I will, we will now open up public hearing on this ordinance. Anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so at this point. Seeing as no one is coming up, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to the adoption of ordinance number 52022. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, supported by Mr. Marcos. We will have a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion by Councilman Lloyd, supported by Councilman Marcos, for the adoption of ordinance number 5-2022, an ordinance of the City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending Chapter 42, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, is hereby amended by the addition of Section 42-8, immunity for damages to right-of-way improvements. Shall this ordinance pass? Councilman Levens?
Yes.
Pro Tem Lally?
Yes.
Councilman Lloyd?
Yes.
Councilman Marcos?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
And Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted unanimously. It will be published in a manner prescribed by law. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And we move on to our council comments. And this evening, we will start with Mr. Lally.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all the students that came in tonight and all the generals from our Allen Park Public Works and firemen, and I don't see no police officers today. I wonder why. But anyway, I will thank you for coming. I want to really thank Richard that came up here. I told him to come up here and tell him about it because we want to have a meeting on the 20th, and we want to just get going on it. And I think we did a heck of a good job as far as the fundraiser that we had. I never expected so many people there. That was very nice. And it's very well attended and a lot of, like you said, like a contribution was there. A lot of contribution money. It was really nice. And this won't be the last. This is just the beginning. We're going to keep going even though when the park is done and usable, we're going to keep going even after that, whether I'm up here or down there. I'm going to do it. And we're going to do it. Because I said that we're going to do it before, and we all continue to do it. And that's, when we do the fundraiser, it's really the fundraiser after that, after we get this built, hopefully, with our city administrators on board and all the community, we probably do something there, and we're going to do something nice for both parks, not just that park, the Allen Park, both sides. The one on Champagne and Pelham, and the one on College and Allen Road. That, what the guy mentioned about the park being all dirty and everything, that's terrible. Well, I have to really have somebody there at nighttime to look at it once in a while, have somebody to look at it. Because that's terrible when they throw stuff away and they don't clean up. We want to keep the city beautiful and organized, not just you go there and play cards. You got, play basketball. You got garbage cans right there. They don't like to use it. It's just like, but that's probably the way they live at home, too. That's not right. Out of that, we're going to keep going. It's be an annual thing about the fundraiser for both parks for maintenance. Part of it is to keep the place clean. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Lloyd?
I would like to start off with a big thank you to Pat Bailey. I feel like every year, I've kind of grown accustomed, like it's part of the fall season when Mr. Bailey starts coming and talking to us about Halloween on Park Avenue. It's been there as long as I've been alive. So for 34 years, I'm 34 years old. So that's an amazing Allen Park tradition and very much appreciate your contribution to the city and to what it means to be an Allen Parker. So thank you. On that same note, big thank you and extremely proud of Giselle Ford for stepping up and being a commissioner. And I think that this is something that's incredibly important, that you can change the world, just you can start at home and build out from there. This is, I know that it's probably not what everybody's imagined, big ideas of going different places. Our clerk has pointed out to me, a lot of times, happens all the time, people go out to the big cities, Chicago, New York, end up back in Allen Park. So charity starts at home. And it doesn't need to be city government, whatever it is. Strive to make your place, your city, a better place to live. Like Councilman Lally's talking about, that's when you're at the park, cleaning up after yourself, even if it's not yours, clean up after your people. Something that Councilman Valerius is talking about, just walking his dog, picking up. These are things that make this a great place to live. Now to something that I think is important to talk about, absentee ballots are now out. And if you've received one, on that absentee ballot, you have noticed the last item on there, I'm pretty sure it's the last item on there, is the charter amendment. So this year, this election year, we are asking you once again to amend the city charter. And I think it's important that you know about it. I've had citizens that have expressed some concern to me, so I wanted to kind of address some of those concerns. So what the amendment to the city charter will do is, is it's going to take the city treasurer from being an elected position, and it is going to turn it into being an appointed professional position. So when that position was first created with the city in the 1950s, we were much smaller as far as our finances. We were much smaller as far as the job that went into that, that role. We have since morphed into a multi-million dollar organization. The vast majority of our finances, all of our finances are handled through our Chief Finance Law Officer, Ms. Works. And this position does not really meet with what are the modern needs of a municipality. So one of, some of the concerns that have been expressed to me is that if we are going to take a treasurer away from being an elected position, then we're losing some level of oversight. My big response to that is, is that this is your oversight. We still have seven elected officials that every week, we review all the financials of the city, all the purchases. Every year, we review the budget. We ask these questions. We are making sure that the money of the city of Allen Park is being spent appropriately. This is something that our current treasurer, who was planning on not running for reelection, she supported this idea as being necessary. Because right now, it is, it is, it is an important job. It's sending out the tax bills. It's making sure the taxes are collected. And if you are to have that up to an election, it is very possible that not the right person is going to get into it. So this is going to take the city treasurer and put it under the, very similar to our other positions, like our department heads, our city manager appointed by the mayor. Again, those oversights are still there. If you have questions about it, which is absolutely understandable, you should have questions about things that you're asked to vote on, please ask somebody. You know, ask somebody up here. Ask myself. My email is dloyd@cityofallenpark.org. If you see me running on the streets, which is very common, stop me, talk to me about it. But I think that this is something that is very important to bring the function of this city government kind of into a more modern time. So I think it's important that this passes. If you, again, if you have questions, please ask. And more importantly, please vote. All right? And read that ballot all the way down to the bottom. Even if you mark straight party ballot, that doesn't handle your, that doesn't handle a lot of the issues on there, including the city ordinance. So please make sure to vote if you're 18. Okay? All right? Make sure that you get registered. All right? And make sure if you are voting, you're reading down all the way through that ballot. And I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guests that came here today. I definitely want to say thank you to Richard that came and gave his presentation, updated us on the fundraiser for the Memorial Park. Will like to echo everything that Dan said. I'm not going to even repeat everything he said. I think he said it the best possible way. I will just echo and say I support it because it does bring our city more, step closer to being more modern. So I share that to a T. I also want to thank our Allen Park Fire Department for their outstanding open house they had this past weekend. My sons and my wife were able to attend until my oldest son had enough and just wanted to play with the water and it was time to go. But while we were there, we had a great time. Everyone in attendance seemed to have just as equally good time. They had chili, they had hot dogs, they had demonstration of what they do to keep us safe. It was fantastic. I encourage you to come out when the fire department has that event again. And I can't speak more highly about that and everything that our firefighters do for us. Thank you again to our student commissioners. It's a great honor. I'm telling you right now, I'm happy you get involved at this early age. I wish I would have done it myself. So that shows a big point. I will echo again, as my colleague Dan said about voting, it's, that's your right. So whenever you say you want to fight for what's on the ballot or what's going on, this is your opportunity. Comes maybe once, twice a year, depending on the year, but I'm not going to echo and say this is the most important election of your lifetime, but I'll say get out and vote. And with that, Mayor, I will yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Levens?
So last meeting, I didn't say much. And I was thinking, well, maybe I should do eight minutes this meeting, but I won't. Mostly, first off, the fundraiser at the Elks Club for the Memorial was fantastic. Great job to Tony with the sauce and Chikat Chatori. Wonderful job, a great turnout. There's a lot of things going on. I want to say great job to Lauren, the DDA, doing all the events, the farmer's market. Please make sure you go out and support that every Friday. And then the, just like the administrator Pori with the haunted library and the scarecrow festival, just and the pumpkin patch. Mr. Bailey, thank you always for working on that. And then for those who are like, well, where do those pumpkins come from? They come from Greenfield Village. So just in case everyone where they come from. So thank you again, Mark, for taking care of that always. To the students, I've been coming to these meetings or have been on council at least 17 years now. I understand, yeah, it's goat, because it's class and stuff, but it really is, personally me, the most important thing is city government because the most of your voice matters. Again, our government and the country politics and stuff, this is the one that you get the most out of. So please make sure, even after you graduate, please keep involved with the city. And then once you're 18, if you want, you can run for city council like me and hopefully get on. For the election, I'm not going to be up here to tell you how to vote. I am here to say, just make sure you go vote. You don't even have to vote for every single thing, even if it says vote for six people. You don't have to. You can vote just for the proposals. There's so, so when you, and trust me, the first time I ever voted, it was very like, ah, there's two pages or something like that. I understand confusing. But do your research. Again, I'm not up here to tell you how to vote yes, no, who, and all that stuff. That's your, that's your decision. To the Smiths, thank you for what you do for the city and donations. Again, last meeting, I said absolutely nothing. And they made you point it out that, again, it was a little test that the less you say, the more people observe things. But it's just, because back in the day, council members, they would just say, thank you for coming, and that was it. And the meetings were more of the actual meeting and less with council comments. The, today is National Coming Out Day. And it's been for me four years since I have been. Also, part of, because I represent the whole city, everyone involved. To those, especially in the LGBTQ group, please make sure you get vaccinated for, for the, there is the monkeypox vaccinated. You can go to Oakland County for that. I have gotten mine for that. And mostly, just keep saying positive, keep supporting local businesses, and keep just getting involved with your wonderful city. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Charles. Mr. Marcos?
Wow, what's left? A couple of things. The gentleman addressing the park, we talked about the garbage in the park. There is nothing wrong with calling the police when you think there's some nefarious action going on in the parks. But I'm going to give you a statistic that I read a few days ago. The Allen Park Police in the month of September had 995 calls, runs. That's an average of about 33 a day. We don't need, that's, it's way, it's a lot. I mean, they have a lot to handle. If you don't see them out there, believe me, they're doing something. They're not sitting around, except when they're doing their Facebook thing. But they're busy. And when you have a situation in these parks anywhere, call them. There is nothing wrong with calling them. They're there, believe me. These, the Allen Park Police are more involved in the community than any police department I've ever seen. So I'll let that go for a minute. But I wanted to thank Mark Bailey also. His relentless pursuit of Halloween is fantastic and keeping these kids happy and the handicap program with the Elks. They, that's all they do. They work their butts off this. They put this program together. And I know Mark is always on it. So thanks, Mark. Really appreciate it. The last thing I have to say is, there's a lot going on in the city between now and December. Go on the social media, go on the Allen Park City website. There's a calendar. There's an events section you can hit down, bring the calendar up, and it'll show you everything that's going on in the city. Come and join us. Come to all these events. They're everywhere. There's a lot going on. So please come. Thank you all for coming. And if you haven't come, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank everybody for giving the election info. Took everything I was going to say, but mine's real simple. November 8th is coming up. I, instead of keep telling you guys things, I want everybody to visit who's eligible to vote. If you have any questions about anything, go to mi.gov/vote. Okay? That'll get you everything through the state of Michigan and only through the state of Michigan. I know everybody's got this, oh, get election information here, here, and here. But you'll only get exactly what the laws and the procedures are, none of the other stuff. Another one, now I can't endorse it, but I do promote it, is Vote 411 for Information on Candidates and Proposals. And that is the League of Women Voters. Okay? And they truly do get both sides. So if you're unsure, now the number one problem there is your local issues usually aren't in it. So like your school board races, our local proposal, even our county, I think there's one in the county.
There's one in the county. So, but again, if you have any questions about the election process, at michigan.gov/vote or MI.gov/vote. And for information on candidates and proposals, legawomanvoters.lmv.org or vote411.org. And with that, everybody, have a good night. God bless you.
Thank you, Michael. I'll try not to repeat, but I had a few things I wanted to comment. Yes, a big shout out to the fire department for their open house. The weather was great, the place looks wonderful, and the event was well-attended. And I got my t-shirt. Every child who went had a great time. And I can tell you that if you want to entertain a youngster, give them a fire hat, the chance to inspect the inside of an ambulance, and a few fire hoses, and a puddle. Most of all, a puddle, and they will have a ball. All you have to do is, I, I took, had a lot of fun watching some of these little kids playing in the puddles that were left by the fire hoses where they were spraying down the house. It's quite a thrill to look at a two or three or four-year-old just face light up in delight. It's like water, and I can jump in it and splash and do everything that mom and dad won't let me do at home. It isn't this wonderful? I, again, want to thank the two individuals who volunteered to become our student commissioners. I've been trying to get that program started for a number of years, and hopefully, you will have, you'll be an inspiration for other of your classmates to apply in the coming years because from my viewpoint, you are the future. Allen Park needs people to serve on commissions going forward. Our commissions in this city perform very valuable tasks, and we need to have more individuals become involved with them. Absentee ballots, as it was mentioned, went out and have started coming back in. I can't emphasize enough that whether you vote absentee or you vote in, at the polls, please vote, but even more important, vote wisely. Do your research. There is a lot of reliable information to be had. Please seek out the facts. Be a knowledgeable voter. Don't fall into the name, oh, I recognize that name, trap. Do your research. Know who you are voting for and why. I think Charles even made a good point is that if you're not sure, it's better to not fill in that little box rather than to just fill in a box at random. Just as in life, the choices you make not only impact you, but others. So the more you know, the better the choices you will make. Again, a reminder that October is Cancer Awareness Month, and Michelin, which owns the landmark Uniroil, is going to lit that tire, is lighting that tire in pink for the entire month. And on Thursday, as we mentioned, October thirteenth, is Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. And I encourage you to do a little research on that. It was very eye-opening to me to have a better understanding of what my friend and people I know are having to live with and living life to the fullest, and for that, I commend them. Lots of thank yous to go around. I know that fundraiser was a success. I didn't make it, but I support that memorial that's ongoing. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lally. Supported by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We are adjourned at six fifty-four. Thank you all for coming.